All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 5:08 PM. The first item on tonight's meeting is a district priority workshop on academic growth and early literacy, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees, thank you for being here tonight. Special guests, thank you for being here tonight. We even have some community members here tonight for workshops, so excellent. Thank you all. This is a focus, as you know, we've been trying to about once a month hone in on one of the five priorities that the board has adopted for the course of the year. This one is our academic growth priority, and specifically, we're talking about K-3 literacy in Arlington ISD tonight. Dr. Wertz is gonna lead us in some activities and discussion, and get us rolling.
Right. Good evening, everybody. So, good evening, everybody.
Good evening!
So, we're actually excited to talk to you tonight about K through three literacy and the early literacy program that we are working on here in Arlington ISD. And I thought I would just set the stage for how we're engaged tonight, what specifically is the content we're gonna work around. So, you have already seen, as a board member, you've already seen our data. You've already been given access to our district improvement plans, the strategies that we're working on, how those are happening, and we will bring you updates specifically around those strategies, where we are in implementation, and the impact those are having on results when we get to January, February, and I'll share you those dates at the end of the meeting. What we wanna spend our time with today is really calibrating on what science-based early literacy is supposed to look like, and what strategic moves have to happen here in Arlington ISD over the next several years as we start to make a more significant shift towards those things, and what kinds of things we should be thinking about as board members and as administrators as we make those shifts over time. So, I thought I would start off by this quote, this is from President Obama back in the day, and he said, "Literacy is the most basic currency of the knowledge economy." And I wanted just to take a second at your tables, if you wouldn't mind, introduce yourself if you don't know who each other are, and just what does this mean to you? And we're only gonna spend about a minute on this, what does this mean to you in context of what we're about to talk about?
He said literacy is the basis for...
Not taken away, just as nice.
So...
Everything.
You remind me of that quote with like essentially learn to read, and then we pivot to read and learn, and that reads learn is the rest of our lives. We should hit the first part.
Just like what if you pay money or... Whatever. Whatever. It's your way, it's whatever it is. You're trying to... Is this part of a video? Who's talking about that idea? What if you, you know, that's hard to think of.
To that point, I was a student.
Okay, so what are some of the big ideas? What did you think about? When he says literacy is the most basic currency of the knowledge economy, what is he talking about?
The thing you need in order to be able to access everything else.
Right, and that's really important in our conversation today because as a district, we're working to improve lots of outcomes. You're working to improve math outcomes, you're working to improve science outcomes, really outcomes in CTE. It doesn't matter what you're trying to improve, the foundation for all of it starts with reading. So, you'll often hear in math like, "Oh, we need to improve our math scores," but the problem is a reading problem. Whenever you think about an individual's ability to access learning, the foundation of it always starts with reading. So, in your homework, your pre-work, we gave you two quick videos to watch that did two different things. One talked a little bit about how the brain works and actually learns to read, and the other spoke specifically to what the science says needs to happen in the classroom in order for that to occur. So, at your tables, I'm gonna give you about five minutes, what I'd like you to do is just dialogue. When you watch the videos, what were the big takeaways that you walked away with? What's an aha that you had, or a learning that you learned about that you may not have thought about before? And what implications does that have in the way that you think about the way reading instruction should be happening in the classroom? So, about five minutes.
Apparently, I'm a typical student.
Okay, we'll film you.
I'm gonna work.
They're out of trouble.
How they read like...
There's like a graphic.
It's kinda like that they say.
I guess.
We're trying to learn.
Both authentic and passing.
Identify the...
But we try to...
It's so important.
It's so important.
It's so important.
Connection.
We're catching.
Yeah, for us.
It's amazing.
And so, this, I'm gonna say, it's so hard for them.
They were saying pretty cool.
And that's why we have work.
And they...
And all more science.
I like that same video. I never talked about what is a nade, it was the visual. Babies are born because the human sees, but not to make sense of it. To be able to do a word, or not to be able to do any of that. So, I loved how it's basically saying you gotta start with what the kids do, and strategically build it. So, I agree, it's not a nade. The thing is, I was... Three lines of building. You watch my video, now complex, sexually, it's... I'm trying to be... That's just... Don't... To... The order of the service is still in working in this area. So, that when they can, they're not... And it's kinda... Normally, I think something you have a... You start reading, just that while they're in action, it's not a logical order. And they're... They're... Before they... Before they... If we... Some... Don't... It's more... It's fantastic.
I think that's what I like about this analogy is balance. Balance. And I have a big aha, because you're always thinking about when I taught.
I know, I know.
Like how long ago that was, but it's the balance.
My head's...
And I think what happens is we do a lot more like... That's hard. Yeah, and then we... That's really more recognition.
The recent video was interesting to me, but we talked about something that I...
I think too, that I like about...
Was able to see the word.
Those have to all be, you know, either...
You know, it's... It's a good seed word. Say.
Individual dynamic.
But... Trying to... Yeah.
And we got it, and we thought it was exciting. In the way that I... Sorry. You really had a true reading, right? Yeah.
Like, strange for like she hit third grade or whatever.
It's weird.
And it was like...
Learned how to... I didn't go.
She wasn't able to...
Right.
But she had really good phonetic...
After...
So, she had no... No sentence, we're working with, so therefore the reading problem. And I was like, we just need to... It's reality, there's something that we're... We work on it specifically, now she's... Very good. But...
What do you think about that?
Probably poor parenting.
I didn't... What's her other thing?
Well, she seemed good identified with this scrap of...
Whatever.
ADHD, and that's what prompted us to start looking at your dad. Um, regarding the right sports, I don't know what it was, other than just running the school. I don't, we didn't do anything different with our younger daughter, we didn't have... So, I can only assume that it was...
Yes.
Her chemistry.
Well, when you're learning about the... Interesting. Right? If you didn't go to a...
Super relentless.
Yeah. I mean, who can... Black hair. No, my own test.
It's really... Dr. No. I don't know. She's...
Okay, so what were some of your big takeaways? What are some ahas that you had as you learned a little bit about the way the brain learns to read, and specifically, what has to happen in order for that to occur? What were some of the big ideas that you talked about at your tables? Someone share, what did you guys talk about at your table?
Mr. Mike elevated the point that there's a whole lot of science involved in learning to read and teaching to read. He said, "Not being an educator, I've never had to think about," and so, now that he sees, he watched the videos, he was like, "There's a whole lot going on when you learn to read, and certainly to teach somebody how to read." I'm sorry, did I capture that?
Did you do that?
Yes. I know you're reading, so I can... Too.
You're talking to us, right?
No, yeah, it's just more, you wouldn't notice unless you're in it. And so, people who are in it, you automatically think this should be the easiest task to do. Right. It's like math, it's difficult. I really wanna hold on to this idea as we kind of progress our conversation tonight because the complexity at which it is, that's involved in terms of teaching you reading and things you have to think about, also implies that there's not just a quick win, easy solution, which is gonna be part of our discussion tonight, too. Some other table, what else did you guys talk about in terms of big takeaways?
We talked about how, in K through three especially, both the Scarborough's reading rope, both language comprehension and word recognition, those are components that both have to occur in the literacy block. And the rope gets tighter as you gain fluency and comprehension. And after, you know, a certain, after a certain stage in your literacy development, word recognition will not become a necessary part of the instruction.
And if your focus is primarily on the word recognition part of the rope, and the other part is ignored, you might have kids that can decode, won't comprehend anything. They're just spending all their time laboring through words, they don't necessarily learn to read, right? So, one other comment, one other takeaway that came from the group. Don't decide.
How hard it is to teach reading.
Okay, tell us more.
You know, some kids come with having been read to, like we were discussing early on, and word recognition, and others come with nothing.
Right.
Or some come with disabilities that are not acknowledged yet. And it's just so hard to teach reading.
Yeah, there's actually science around or research around, if they have it, they basically present it in a form of what they call the reading ladder. But it's this idea of like, what percentage of students actually come to school who have the ability, and there's really fast natural learners that are gonna pick up reading pretty quickly? About 60% of students, that's actually not the scenario. It requires a very systematic approach to instruction. And then you have your dyslexic group, who's at the, who's the 15 to 20%, who actually require even a higher level of effort. So, the idea that if I expose myself for students to reading, eventually they're gonna learn to pick up, that's actually not true for the great majority of kids. It is, it is true for some kids, but they're far and in between compared to the big majority. I want you to kind of hold on to those ideas, and I want you to think about it. We're gonna pan out for a second just to talk about this because this is actually not a Texas problem. It's a problem that's persisted across the country for quite some time. This is data, the most recent data from the National Assessment of Educational Progress, which is given in grades fourth and eighth grade, where they look and see how students are progressing in terms of proficiency across the country. And in this, what you can see in the 2022 data, Texas is lower than those eight, there's eight states where they're lower, and this includes the Department of Defense. And then there are six states where we're slightly higher, and the rest of the country, we look very similar. And another way to kind of think about it, if this is the, if this is the proficiency line right here, this is the percentage of students across Texas up here who are considered proficient in reading, beyond basic or below, and this is the national average. What do you notice when you look at the data in terms of how it's progressed since 1998?
Very stable.
Yeah, it's very, very stable. It hasn't really changed a lot. And this is the reason why everyone's starting to really talk about the science of teaching reading again.
Because the whole language approach.
Exactly. It's because we actually adopted, if you're, if you're in the reading world, it was back in the day, it was whole language, and then it turned into this concept of balanced literacy, which introduced concepts of whole language mixed with this concept of phonics. And the way that they approached took place isn't moving the needle across the whole country. So, everyone's asking like, "What does science actually say about the way reading?" It's actually one of the most studied human behaviors, is how people learn to read in research, but it's not actually moving the needle. More than 60% of American fourth graders are not considered proficient according to NAEP, and that's been persistent since the 1990s. And House Bill III in Texas was Texas's response to that problem. So, when House Bill III came out, we all started setting goals specifically around grade three reading. And it's because Texas was actually ranked number 45 in the whole country in terms of proficiency. And so, when the legislature passed House Bill III, they were trying to fix some of those issues. And here are some of the strategies that came out of that, the reading academies, which taught the science of teaching reading, how to approach it, new certifications, and then also providing some additional weighted funding to address areas like dyslexia, or how do you facilitate this in the program where literacy is happening in two different languages? In Texas, we, we call, and when you think about NAE, the NAEP, they call it proficient. In Texas, we, we list it as meets. And in Texas, the percentage of students that are actually meeting grade level standard according to their, the way they rank them, 46% of the students in third grade across the whole state were actually at the meets level. In Arlington, this is where we sit. So, while we have 62% of our third graders passing the test, if you wanted to look at meets, which is what the state is constantly looking at when they consider House Bill III, we're sitting at 36%. And so, you ask yourself, "Well, what's the opportunity?" Well, what the research shows from TDA is that students who are meeting proficiency levels at the meet standard in third grade have a 2.8 times chance of actually meeting standards in eighth grade. And if you meet standards in eighth grade in reading and in math, you're 80% less likely to drop out, and you're 10 to 20% more likely to graduate in a five-year time period. So, then the question is, okay, so how do you shore this part up on the primary grades? How do you ensure that kids are actually exiting third grade and moving into fourth grade as proficient readers? Well, Emily Hanford, she's a writer for the Hengy Ture Report, which comes out of Columbia Teachers College. Columbia University's Teachers College says, "There is no more debate at the point among scientists that reading is a skill that needs to be explicitly taught." So, with that being said, we wanna talk tonight about how we're making that shift to more explicit instruction here in Arlington, and we're gonna do an activity. So, at your tables, I'm gonna steal yours, you each have an envelope, and in the envelope you have a set of cards. You have yellow cards, and you have green cards. And what I want, what I want you to do is look at each card, and you're going to sort them into two categories. One category is gonna be reflective of guided reading, not guided reading, sorry, balanced literacy, which is a component, I just gave one card to my... Balanced literacy, and the other side of the, of the half is gonna be science of teaching reading. So, what you're gonna do, you're gonna look at your cards, and you're gonna say, "Does this reflect guided, does this reflect balanced literacy approach, or does this reflect more of a science of teaching reading approach?" And you're gonna try to sort it. I'll give you one clue. If you find one that you think is science of teaching reading, or vice versa, balanced literacy, the other card talks about the same thing from the other point of view. So, you're not looking for all these random things, if there's one side of the house, there's an opposite. So, just to make it a little easier for you. All right, I'm gonna give you about 10 minutes to work on that, and then we're gonna talk about what I realized.
Are you reading out loud as a shirt? All right, includes informal assessments, observation, running records, work samples, to guide instruction, focuses on tracking reading level progression.
Focuses on comprehension, fluency.
Level. Reading record. Gave it away, right? Balance. Fluency is built through systematic guided practice of decoding and word recognition. Emphasizing...
Do we cut the parallel? That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
So, research-based approach focused on, another one about assessment, emphasizing... So, it's a regular formal assessments. This one's... This is... So, this one's guided. Which is... Science of your work. Along with word recognition.
This is down how science of teaching the brain learns.
You're...
I think it's science of teaching reading. Yeah, but like, we give word... Yeah. This is right.
Directly. Instruction on decoding and learning. Following... Here.
So, maybe we just make the pair.
We just keep all the yellows going. Yeah. And then we'll...
Automaticity. Along with very much comprehension aligned to...
Use a wide variety of tests, such as level readers, big book.
So, just so you know, it's... Oh, you're not looking at the color, Mr. T. Your goal, your goal is to match the size with the...
Thank you for the tea. We can do that. Okay, so we're putting them side by side by here. Which one they found. Okay.
Phonics, decoding.
So, obviously, just so you know, the yellow and the green represent the two sides, your goal is to match.
Yes, that's what we're doing. Got it. It was clear for these teams.
Focuses on tracking reading level progression.
I always...
It's sequential, the curriculum follows it. It's like a... Master.
Well, here's one of the... It's...
Does it go there? So, they have left... It's not based on...
Math is a...
That's some such strategies.
So, they have structure.
There's... There's like... There's like... Various texts and comprehension activity. Here's... Um... Writing is... We're about materials.
A research-based... About materials. At the side of phonics of language. Definitely this side. Emphasizes on comprehension, fluency, and...
Reading is hot with a focus on decoding. Oh, that would... Explicit instruction versus context clues.
Flexible. Well, just about comprehension.
There we go.
Students are encouraged to use context, picture, sight words to recognize familiar words. Word recognition is probably excluded to a variety of texts.
Often integrated.
It's not direct with...
Evil eye, I know. I know.
Everything involved. It's...
You do better. That's exactly right. No shame. No shame. What do we wanna start?
Uses highly structured, skill-specific... Total tag.
All the yellow would be one.
Yes, but the goal is, they are, but the goal is to match the one side of it. So, you can see how it's...
So, if you cared on... Where can you know this?
Woo-hoo! We get an A.
Something is...
We get an A.
For the secondary.
I wonder.
You know, the yellow. The big sight, you're reading. So, that's the green.
Okay, that's interesting.
That's not... The... Yes. Various reading... You... The giveaway was all in the like...
We finished first, no. We finished first. Emphasizing... Oh, I didn't know. I didn't know it was a rate. Not there anymore. You finished first. Right. We all have the experts. I know. Yeah. Skill.
Flexible. Literature. Often... Units. For beings as I... This feels like all of the explicit teaching. Teaching me feels like a lot of exposure. Having like...
There it is.
Also...
A blend of various reading strategies. See how we did?
No problem.
Exactly.
This is highly structured.
That's right, yeah.
Oh, wait. You started with the start, and you remember.
Oh. Work writing. I'm fine.
You guys... Highly structured, still specific.
Emphasis is placed on the... Like, you're... Yeah. Okay, what's the next one? What's the next one? Writing.
Hard order, recognition, this is... This is... Thanks for... My...
Writing. Students... Regular... That's...
Because we can know... Writing is what's focused, so they love it. Regular... Regular...
But let me see, that's regular.
Fluency is built through systematic guided practice.
Fluency to the... That's like we got.
Absolutely, and you know, right.
Kind of like...
Regular formal assessments are huge to try. Without reading.
Mind it, yes.
Research-based approach, focus on evidence.
Mine is... Combinations, whole class. You're in your... Research is a... Very hard to... Places.
STR, a research-based approach focused on evidence.
If you finish up, go ahead, and I passed out the answers. Can then try to validate your thinking. As you're looking at the answers, what I want you to think about is...
I know it's...
What are some of the biggest changes that you're, that you're noticing between the two sides? If you're a district, which every district was, is one that embraced balanced literacy, and you're actively trying to make a shift to the science of reading? You just sort of the differences. I want, I wanna invite you at the table now, looking at the answers and thinking about the changes. What are some of the biggest changes that will happen, will have to happen in the classroom in order for that to occur?
Need decodable readers.
Okay, say more. You said you need decodable readers?
Well, that's one of the ways it's taught.
Right, so, to your point, there's a, there's a shift in the kinds of resources that are inside the room. You can't, you can't do this type of re-instruction using the same resources in the same way that you had in the past, right? What else?
There's a shift in pedagogy, now you have to directly and explicitly teach all of those reading skills to students.
Versus...
Reading and encouraging that love for reading and enrolling students in rich literacy.
Right, it's that, you heard the difference, we, one is very explicitly and systematically taught, and the other one is either integrated, or it's done through exposure and choice. It's a very different approach, right? What's another change that has to occur?
With the science of teaching reading, there is more of a structure in attacking words. So, I can't learn how to decode multi-syllabic words if I don't know my blends yet. So, there's more of a clear systematic sequence, and I have, I have to be able to go in an order that makes sense for kids to attack words.
Right, and this is a really important point because the question is, it's like, if you have a very specific diagnosis, and you're going to the hospital, and there really was only one medication that you could take to solve it, reading in some ways is that way around these systematic scientific approaches. Brains learn to read in the same way. You might come to the starting point in different places, but your brain is actually designed to read in the same way, and what the research is showing is that by eight years old, every kid's brain is already wired to read, by eight years old. All right, two more ideas.
With that, it's the idea of assessments and what it is that we're tracking.
Okay.
So, with the, with balanced literacy, we're doing running records, and we're doing reading levels and things like that. First is over here, we're tracking various specific skills and putting them awareness and decoding and fluency. So, even what we're tracking with the kids is the...
Yes, and this is really important. So, one of the big concepts in balanced literacy, you'll hear teachers often talk about, is kids moving through reading levels. In science of reading, that's not the case. You focus on specific skills, which is why you hear us talk about where are the gaps that are happening in early childhood reading? You set goals around those specific skills, and when kids are reading text, they're reading text on grade level. One of the big conversations that often happen is that when it comes to low reading, with balanced literacy process that's often brought up is, if I'm always reading at a specific level, and I never really advanced as, as I should through the levels, I actually walk out of grade level still reading below grade level. The concept is, as kids become more and more adapted and more skilled at the word recognition component, and the reading rope gets tighter and tighter, they can apply those skills in grade level content, grade level texts, and their proficiency grows and grows and grows. So, the difference is a lot more skill-based and less about levels. All right, I'm gonna keep moving because I know we're gonna run out of time, and I just wanted to elevate a couple of myths and facts, and I'm gonna go through this part quickly I'm going to go through this part quickly because I want you to get to the the most important activity. These are just some myths that are often you often hear people throw around when it comes to reading. If there's late one where some kids just take longer, if you give them enough opportunities to engage in the authentic text, they're going to they're going to learn to read. Kids should be able to look at pictures and look at semantic cues and visual cues to make meaning out of their words. That actually might help you get the sense about what they're talking about, but doesn't make you a reader if you're using if you're not actually actually able to read the words. Another one that you're going to hear a lot is like, oh, it takes the love of reading out of reading if the kids have to engage in reading this way. Well, the big idea is if you actually can't learn to read, you can't learn to love it. If I can't read content that's actually aligned to my age group, you can't learn to love it. And then finally, this other idea that science uh science of reading is a program. It's not a program and it doesn't only emphasize phonics. It's kind of like what you were saying, Sarah, which is it's really about this reading rope. And if the reading rope doesn't come together tightly, then you're not going to actually generate a reader. One of the misnomers around science of reading is if I just add thirty minutes of systematic phonics instruction, I'm going to get a reader. And that's actually not the case at all. You might get kids that can decode, but they're not going to read or comprehend anything. So I just wanted to anchor some of our thoughts around this concept around the reading rope because the metaphor, I think, is very powerful. Why do you think she chose a rope? Say it louder so people on camera can hear you.
Because all of this is intertwined.
Yeah, and the tighter that it gets, the better. So I want to lean on something you said earlier, Sarah, because I think it's really important. Kids start out, of course, in the primary grades, learning that there's actually a sound that's attached to a letter and they learn to chug those by those those combinations by decoding. And there are some words that they have to learn by sight because they don't follow reasonable patterns. Like one of the words that you heard in the video is like foreign. That's not a reason, that's not a normal pattern, so those are ones they memorize. The more they can do that with automaticity, the less they concentrate on the words they're reading so they can start to make more meaning. The part at the top, this is how they engage in structure, like how do I strategically leverage my scheme and my background knowledge and my understanding of the words that I'm reading or how complex the text is or what genre I'm talking about? Because if I'm engaging in content that's fiction versus non-fiction, I'm going to think about it differently. Or my own metacognition, like how I think about what I'm reading? How do I, as a reader, understand with automaticity? Like I can read the words and then strategically employ these parts in tight, tight, tight ways so I can comprehend. Kids have to have engagement in those ways around things that are at their actual grade level. And this is different than the way that we teach reading in a balanced literacy structure. It's it's much more prescriptive, it's much more sci- like, I guess scientifically based. It's not, it's explicit. These are skills that are explicitly taught. So where are we going? So the reason why I wanted to have this conversation with us as a as a team with board is if you want to make the shift, there are key shifts and strategies as a school system we have to think about to really do this in a meaningful way. And one of the components that you talked about, Ms. Ruel Banks, earlier was this idea of like you what we're going to resource differently. That's just one of the things. So what we're going to do is we're going to do an activity at your table. You all have one of the shifts. So I'm going to just kind of highlight this real quick. Let me give you the direction and we get started. There are seven key shifts as a school system that this model recommends that you do and think about if you're really going to move the needle in terms of reading proficiency in the school system. Two of these shifts, the ones in yellow, are about learner educator motivational shifts, like the way that we actually approach our own personal self in our work, meaning like student agency in the reading components and also the way teachers engage in it. The middle components are all about the things that you would do instructionally, like what are the literacy instructional shifts that actually have to happen in the classroom? And it's the combination of all those parts. So what you're going to do as a as a team is you each at your table have a set of a set, well, one set of the shifts. So you're going to have like, if this table here, you're only looking at shift one and four. If you're this table over here, you might be looking at like shift two. And what you're going to do is you're going to read the shift that's that you're talking about that has to happen in the system and then the specific strategies that are aligned to those shifts. So for example, in this one, you want to provide explicit systematic instruction. One of the strategies is you have to adopt a high-quality structured literacy curriculum. So you're going to read the strategy and the shift. And what I want you to do is to think about is at your tables, read the shift. What has already been initiated to people in our system that are sitting at the table can share? These are the work that's already started. What do you believe are some of the challenges in the system that will be related to these shifts that we have to actually think about in advance? And then also, what's the board's role as we make these shifts? And what's administration's role as we make these shifts across the system? And then finally, what would be helpful for us to know from a board member's perspective is what do we what would be helpful for you to know as a board member that we may not have shared to this point as we move along this kind of trajectory over the next couple of years? So read your shift, read your strategies, dialogue about these questions, and then we're going to re-anchor before I let y'all go back to practice. There you go. So that's one and four. Everyone has the same one. Yeah, yeah.
Stephen May, he's clarified. These shifts come from T E A, correct?
No, Zee, so this is part of a grant that we're working on with Texas Read, Texas Leads, and they kind of work like strong foundations in helping systems to think about all the parts you want to think about if you're going to employ strategies that really address reading.
That strong foundation grant that's through T E A.
Yes. Skill rather than level.
No, I agree, especially because it's to develop a comprehension using complex texts in balance. And how to do this with a different grade and they're reading at a second grade level. And balance, they don't need the small group. They hold them and they teach them in a.
So as far as the word being initiated, I think that's. We can probably speak to the best of the setting strategy around those cultural norms and the routine. We need to continue to engage in. I think we're trying to to do with this shift, which is where that's. Which is where that strategy picks up, uses decoder. Running to the dead levels. Which is where competition. For that.
Grade level rather than.
Great. I see this performing a lot.
Deal that great level version.
And funnel. If I can't identify the sound. So helping them think about that strategically to know how do I. Not just go to this. Two, they. But trying to work on that. And then also point different direction those back to the. It reminds me how important it's our stringer selection is. We have to get the right. The teacher has to get the right to find the tools and help us see them. They are different skills. In class is good because it does give us all the different. And then as third graders, instead of grouping. You're grouping them by. Oh, it's a.
Kind of everything. But the process can.
We were on I C D. The reason I ask is. Which is shifting. Reading. So we are, we're talking about. Teachers, they do write the units, the assessment.
I was looking at those. To where is the.
Given it a step-by-step.
What are we doing?
More often. I think we have a variety of that kind of abilities in our. Their practice that they always. We didn't get. We're like. If I'm not. So if you're low and vocabulary. Obviously, your comprehension is going to be low. We'll read the work. So really trying to. A little more to the engineering, what is that?
Probably the training that the teachers will receive. You know, I worry that it's just one year. And maybe it's. But overall, this is going to help children. And it's something we need to do. I mean, like the science behind it makes sense. Like it's the training up in two years for them to know how to use data. How to follow.
That's what I want to know. That's right. And when you think about one of the things that you judge, because we do have right now an execution. To do our systematic conic. What appears to. And well, the only.
They're like, I know what I'm doing. I swear I'm a good teacher. You know, and not that new stuff is good stuff, but sometimes I think. Teacher's thing about. I already know what I'm doing. I can help my parents. They've had some success with there.
We're going to.
Those six numbers. Those caught my eye. No, that's why I jumped.
I think. Even for me, looking at. Board role and administration's role. Really looking at strategy. Strategies.
The other thing around the. I was thinking about you said. Like the shift, the known version doing. You feel like. People just. Get everybody know better. They've all. What's the barrier from doing? We are. They they know the. House. Training. We've got a box. Because we. You had. So just. So I think. But. We step back and we saw. Sometimes. I mean, if. She do it with. Because. And we've got the. And. I wouldn't get under the table.
No eye contact.
Deciphering to what. Let it rock it down. Which one?
Where I even put up the names. Where's the names? I think that we've seen this. Yeah, I think we've seen the research. As we continue to look back, okay, so what is the research that helps do? Seeing is they're we're attacking the literacy. And we think, well, they'll just get it, they'll just get it. As we're seeing, they're not just getting. And so this this stagnation cost, we have to look back and make sure that kind of the only box is starlet. Because we just. Idea of hope that emotions will eventually catch up. And I think that's where the stagnation.
No.
We haven't. But we also have. Just wait till what's the next. Plan for that. So now, let's change it. Let's do the strategic, let's do the skills. Let's do it in order upfront, build the knowledge. We can run a pre-k. Up. And that way. For me, it could.
Someone will find a way.
I'm constantly trying to make sense of a word. I don't have the brains to just now think about that. If we're teaching these things upfront and automaticity is there.
I think.
So she. Teach them. Which I think be on. And we have. You asked about. I don't. I do. For our kids, it's really. I have to write about. And all that. Something. I'm. Like that. Try. I could probably write a pretty good.
If you have quality practice.
I've lost me on that. Cross-curricular. Now we know about. Ultimately.
It's teacher. Yeah, it was like everything. So I think that's an area that we need to.
Sure want kids to be able to do all.
The teachers that I've heard from that have been around a while. Yeah, the pushback was because I'm not giving up my.
Yeah, I'm going to be. So truly like. Science. Wire. What happens. Exactly.
They'll say, oh, everybody's doing too.
Okay, yeah. We got only a couple more minutes and then I know you have another part of the meeting to get to, but I wanted to just elevate these components again. And I just want to see if we can put some space in the room a little bit about what are some of the challenges? I do want to call out one thing just so that you know, most of you don't have this because you haven't seen all the parts. There is one specific area that we're not really talking about, which is really not included in our in our actual work, which is around shift number seven, which talks specifically around how you incentivize and financially reward people for meeting certain targets. That's not part of this discussion at all. It just happens to be in this framework, but it's not something we're actually targeting. So with this point of view, what are some of the challenges that you thought as you think about these shifts between balanced literacy and science of reading? What are some challenges that could actually we could actually experience as a system? And what are our individual roles as we think about that?
We thought of the resistance that will take place. Okay, the resistance to change. I mean, we all know with Arlington's microcosm, you need a little change and maybe you get an uproar in certain groups. So that was a question I had, how do we lower the resistance? But you said number seven, so.
No, I haven't. That's not part of the work right here. That's a that was a separate discussion conversation. But I think you're elevating a really important point, which is we cannot underestimate the change management discussion that has to occur in terms of how people emotionally feel about the work they're doing and the shift that that actual thing will be in the classroom. What else? Those are challenges.
We talked about the because we we were looking at some of the strategies in action on our table and one of them is ensuring the literacy block schedule provides ample time. And we know that all the content areas are playing tug-of-war with time. Kids also need recess. Kids also need bathroom breaks, especially at K three. But we we really kind of talked about how critical that min- those minutes are for literacy in the K through three grade levels. And if you don't have that ample time, how will all of these shifts take flight?
Right.
One whole component is small group instruction.
Right.
And I can't offer that small group instruction if it eats into my already short whole group.
Right. And that's actually one of the biggest parts at the beginning is defining what that literacy block looks like. And then also, which parts do you hold really tight and which parts are less tight?
Right.
And then if you adopt one of the moves is you have to adopt a, it says right here, a high-quality structured literacy curriculum that requires daily use. So if the expectation that's tight is we will use this curriculum and we're going to do it every single day, then the the question also has to be is can you do it all in the day? Like, does it actually work that way to the schedule that you're creating? And that's a shift, you know, where you instead of saying, oh, you have a hundred and fifty minutes of literacy instruction, now we're going to actually tell you how to break that down and which resources are most poised to help you to do that as a teacher. That's a little different.
Yeah.
That's a good observation. Somebody else?
I think a little different from the resistance idea is one of the questions that was elevated at our table was about why now? And then I think it's a little different from resistance, but still that that's a challenge in the system is helping people understand why it's needed. Just from a baseline, understanding across the system, whether you're resisting or not, this is the need, this is why we need to address it so we can all be calibrated to go the same direction.
Right, and I can't overemphasize like what that is because even if you were to sit in professional learning today, you'll hear conversations and words about people wanting to hold on to their old practice because there's a there's an idea in education that if you hang on long enough, the pendulum is going to swing right on back. And people who've been in education long enough have actually seen those things happen. And so you if there's emotional connection to the work you've been doing and having to emotionally let go and shift to a new practice takes some intentionality on the part of the system to support it. Before we move to the wrapping up, when you talk when you talked about the role of the board in this discussion and things that you particularly might need to know, what was part of your conversation?
How are teachers going to be trained?
Okay, having some awareness about what steps are going to actually, what do these, what does this look like when you actually start rolling it out until you're prepared for questions? What else?
Dr. Smith really elevated the magnitude of the change and how really this is a really big change in shift for our system and so all the things that come with that.
David?
So I asked specifically about if we're going to make this shift and the role of instructional coaches in early literacy grades. the role of instructional coaches in early literacy grades to be a high-leverage strategy to make the shift. And are, you know, what is it gonna take resource-wise that we're not already providing for those instructional coaches in literacy interventionists?
Right. And that's an inch, that's a, a really important question as a board member, who's gonna be adopting a budget? Is how does the work that needs to happen and be prioritized? How's it reflected in the things that you're being shared? Like we're sharing with you as you consider those decisions, right? Yeah.
We also really talked about the interconnectedness of the work and just, it's interesting, looking at these shifts, how much one decision depends on another, connects to another, connects to another. Which instructional resources do you use? What, what do you go with there? How do you spend your time? Where do you not spend your time? Um, there's a bunch of decisions that are really, uh, connected and embedded together. Um, and interdependent upon one another to be successful.
Right. And they don't happen quickly. Like if you were to read through all the strategies, even the ones up here, which are all the way through four, um, they're not things that you just do quick turns. It's not a add thirty minutes of decoding and reading instruction, you're gonna get a different reading outcome. This is about reshaping the way you do literacy instruction. Um, I will say if there is, when, in the work that we're doing right now around these things, like we're one of sixteen school districts and they're pretty prominent ones in the system. This is something everyone is really struggling with, trying to work through. It's really making the shift between the knowing and doing. A lot of, every, every, well, every teacher in Texas is required to go in the K through three area are required to go through the science of teaching reading instruction. Like learning about Scarborough's rope and how that looks like in the classroom and all that. It's another thing to learn it theoretically and, and it's another thing to actually do it in practice and have a system put all the supports in place to make that happen. We're really trying to do that. And it's gonna take a little bit of time and some effort. I wanted to disclose by just elevating that idea that, um, and Dr. Smith has talked about this a lot around change management, about what are the steps in change management we have to think about as a leadership team? And what role do we, does, like creating demand play, you know, one of the things that we, uh, I saw this quote that I wanted to share that says, "Change is hard because people overestimate the value of what they have and they underestimate the value of what they're gonna gain by giving that up." That's really true in even our situation. If you've been doing a specific practice for a long time and you've had some success with it, when the, when the bar gets shifted about what success looks like, it's hard to make that shift. Because in your mind, you're like, well, I've always done this this way and it's actually worked really well for my kids. Um, how do you create that demand and help people see like what they're actually gonna, how their kids are gonna benefit from the shift? Rather than just, this is what you're gonna do and how you're gonna do it. So, um, I just wanna tell you what we're working on. Um, this framework is, um, something we've been introduced to that we're working through in a grant that we participated or rewrote for, um, it's funded out of the Charles Budd Foundation, but it's through Moody. And it's called Texas Reads, Texas Leads. And what they do is they serve almost like thought partners, kinda like what we did with Holt's work, to really think through all the parts you should be thinking about when you're really trying to make a, a, a real shift in the impact of literacy instruction. Um, and we, we've started that process. We're gonna be re-engaging with them, um, briefly in December. We're gonna come back to them again in January. This is actually a couple of years thing that we'll be doing. Um, and just for updates, so you know, if, if the curiosity, which of course always exists, okay, this is great, there's a long-term plan. What's actually happening right now? We'll come back to you in January on the sixteenth to share with you where we are with third grade right now in terms of like outcomes and things that are happening this year in the district agreement plan. And then on February eleventh, we'll give you the M O Y progress report on how kids are doing on their targets in, in the primary grades and what we're doing to work on those things. So any, anything you wanna add, Matt, or anybody else?
Oh, thank you. I appreciate you doing this. Trustees, any, any questions or comments, please?
I appreciate the conversation engaging for us. Just, um, it, it was really important that all of us come together and calibrate around the move because we're really excited about the opportunity. Um, but we do believe it's gonna take all of us in the room to really make it happen together. So thanks for your time tonight.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Wurzantin. Uh, it is six oh three and at this time we will take a recess and reconvene in the board chambers in closed session for section five five one point zero seven one, section five five one point zero eight four and five five one point zero eight nine of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act for the topic set forth on the issue.